Hello, everybody. Thank you for watching my twenty twenty Town of Gilbert Elections Candidate Interviews. Today I have Town Council Candidate Bus Obayomi. Before I introduce Bus, I want to clarify that he is running for a four-year term and I make that clarification because there's also a two-year term seat open as well. I also want to quickly remind everybody that the deadline to register to vote is coming up very quickly. So please, 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 register to vote, update your information if that's necessary. But without further ado, I have Bus with me today. He's a program manager for a local tech company. He's the author of the book Starting Early, Finishing Strong, and is a former New York State Legislative Aid. Thank you for joining me today.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thanks for inviting me, Danielle.
So I want to start off, as I do with all my interviews, with you to explain to the young voters of Gilbert who you are and why you're running.
Yeah, absolutely. Appreciate you inviting me. It's a great opportunity to be able to talk to you. As I said, I've seen a couple of your videos. And you're doing an amazing job, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I've lived in Gilbert for six years, so I'm one of the new faces here. I moved there because I felt like Gilbert was a great place for my family and myself. A great place to raise a family, to have your kids and all. So I have a two-years-old as well. So the reason why I actually chose Gilbert, not anywhere else, is Gilbert was like the greatest place I could find in Arizona. So everywhere, everywhere felt so brown. So I was like, this place looks different and it's beautiful. I used to live in Phoenix, then I moved down here, and then I lived in Casa Grande, then I moved here. So what got me into just wanting to get involved in Gilbert was I've always have a passion for serving in my local community. I've always felt like I bring a good change. In my prior life, when I was still involved in, you know, in government before I kind of focused on the corporate world, I was the committee member for youth and education. And I was always passionate about issues related to education, issues related to young people. I've been very strategic in kind of getting young people pretty much active before, just like you, involved in government policies and issues and talking to them about how they can get involved and get engaged on issues that matter to them. Because a lot of times they think you have to have a gray hair before you can get involved in politics. So in Gilbert, I got involved in Gilbert Leadership three years ago. It was Gilbert Leadership Class Twenty-Five. And I get to meet a lot of people, local leaders, business leaders, elected officials, and kind of just, you know, rub heads about how we can make a difference within Gilbert, the impact that we can make as well. And one thing that just started recurring to me was the need to speak out for the residents of Gilbert, like the people who live here, the people who have been here for a long time and the people who are moving here. And also being able to serve them, not at the expense of businesses coming in. Of course, I'm for businesses. I do believe that businesses need to come in, but we should not sacrifice the residents that live here. We should put residents ahead of businesses and also encourage small businesses as well within Gilbert. But one thing I always stand for is that I'm passionate about listening to our residents kind of beyond our political or private preference of us, for like it's important to listen to young people, listen to the adults, and listen to what people are saying ahead of whatever issues that we care about and try to serve the people of Gilbert first, ahead of our own personal preference. So I see myself as a servant leader, and that's always been something I'm always passionate about, that I'm a servant first. And I do think that we need to hold our leaders accountable because leadership is not a cushion for you to be comfortable or a cushion for you to let people know you've arrived or for people to serve you. It's a burden, it's a sense of responsibility for you to serve the community as well. So that ideology has shaped the way I am, and that's the reason why I felt this is the best time to get involved in Gilbert and run for Gilbert Town Council.
So my first question is about youth advocacy, because you mentioned that earlier and it's on your website. That's a big issue that you want to address. So I want to ask you to explain a little bit more about what youth advocacy is going to look like if you are elected.
Absolutely. So there was a research that came out two years ago. I resonate the seventh leading state in terms of suicide among young people. Seventh in the United States, right? So those were the issues I was concerned about, and I felt like a lot of times our elected officials did not, did not talk about youth, the issues that they're dealing with, the issues with the suicide rate, and how we can solve those issues. We don't talk a lot more about education. A lot of time we don't talk about youth maybe because we think, hey, they don't, they don't bring any money to my pocket, so why should I care? But I do believe that we always stood when I was growing up, oh, you are the future of tomorrow. You are the future of tomorrow. And then sometimes ten years later, the people are telling you are the future of tomorrow. That's still the same people still in power. You know, you look at, somebody was asking me, how come people in Congress are still, they've been there for fifty-something years, and I'm like, I don't know. They keep telling young people you're the future of tomorrow, but they refuse to do things that encourage young people to get involved. So the suicide aspect of it, I felt like those were issues that we need to engage. And one of my, one of the things I've been doing is trying to go to public schools and charter schools, engage young people. I've always been active in kind of speaking to, you know, youth about issues affecting them, how they can get involved, how to inspire them. I mean, especially when you're a teenager, a lot of times when I was a teenager, it's easy for parents to say, oh, man, you have nothing to worry about, you know? Life is good for you. All you got to do is eat and, and, and I'll pay your school fees and everything is gonna be okay. And that's not true. You know that's not true. You know that there's a lot of pressure that you deal with on daily basis. Pressure from school, pressure from society, pressure from friends, and pressure about where are you going, what's your future like, you know, what's gonna happen? And a lot of those things could, could lead to depression, could lead to anxiety or suicide, or maybe you were friends and get involved in drugs and all that. And I do think we need representation and somebody will be an advocate that would not wait for young people to come to us. That's what adults do. And I just feel that there's a great opportunity to, to engage young people more and also in policymaking as a councilman. I do believe that we're gonna have more young people experience what's like to be in the council. I legislate, I was a legislative aide, you know, with the legislature before. That inspired me to want to get involved in government. I do think we need to give people, a lot of young people, more opportunities to be involved in public, public policy, and that's very important.
I definitely agree. As a person who, as a young person who's interested in politics, it's, it seems like a daunting task. But when I was first creating a idea for talking to these candidates, I, I thought, how many people are actually going to want to listen to eighty-nine-year-old Danny? That doesn't seem likely because we put these elected officials on a pedestal. But in reality, they are supposed to represent us. They are supposed to take the time to talk to us. And, and maybe it isn't gonna fit in a schedule, but at least send out an email trying to see what happens. It's possible. You can set up a meeting with candidates or elected officials, and, and what's the worst that can happen? They can say no.
Yeah.
The speech and debate coach, I definitely want to have my kids come into the classroom and think, I'm not the future of America, I'm the present of America.
The present, yeah.
And regardless of if you have the ability to vote, or you're a young person who has recently got the ability to vote, you have power and you have ability to speak on what matters to you. And transitioning to my next question about what matters to young people. A twenty-twenty National Youth Poll in the U.S. Conference of Mayors finds that eighty percent of young people ages eighteen to twenty-nine and even younger as well view that global warming and climate change is a major threat to human life on Earth as we know it. So since it's a big issue for young people, how do you plan on addressing these concerns? And do you have a plan for maybe transitioning Gilbert to zero or negative carbon emission for the future?
Absolutely. I appreciate that question. So there are major issues affecting us right now, and I do see that. So the global warming is one of those issues that we talked about. It's a conversation that is not gonna go away as well. And it's all about we coming together, because there've been a lot of ideas over the years. One of the bill that I had to actually write back in, when I worked as a legislative aide, was about the environmental pollution. And it was about how, I mean, this might not be specific to Gilbert, as we are, we're pretty much in terms of, in terms of pollution, we really don't have as much issue. But it was, it was an idea about how a couple of pollutants have been viewed in the kind of low-income communities all across the United States, especially back then in New York. And how a lot of times, because a lot of these people just care about surviving, they just want to put food on their table. They don't get to speak out on those issues of what the power plant that's been built behind them, which is causing a higher rate of asthma among young people as well. Those were the research I made, and I saw a growth between the power plant and also the impact of those people were diagnosed with asthma over the period of time. So for Gilbert, where do we go from here is basically looking at where we are as a town. We're definitely probably in a better place than Phoenix, probably in a better place than a lot of other places out there. But I do believe that we can start a conversation and maybe start with young people as well in terms of what are the things that, what are the things within our town or issues or pollutants that we can look at that are major issues, or maybe something about recycling, right? How does that impact our society and how can we encourage people to recycle more? That, so a lot of times we think of big impact about, I want, you know, it's kind of like when I was a child, I'm always like, I want to change the world, you know? And I always tell people I want to change the world, and I got older, and I'm like, what? What part of the world do you want to change? The world is such a big place, you know? And then I finished college and I realized, wow, I, you know, I gotta take care of myself first. But I do think it starts with conversations. We need to bring in more young people in terms of, we see these problems. What areas can we work on? So it's so broad to just say we have environmental issues. But what aspect of it can we change and can we impact within Gilbert, within our town? And I'm always about really intellectual conversation. That's always been my passion. And I also always believe, whether you agree or disagree about where we are in regards to pollution, but we can talk about these issues and see what changes can we make. And this is where we engage people like you, Gabrielle, Danielle. They have brilliant ideas, and many people like you as well, engage them in public policy, bring those issues on the forefront, and we work on it together and be able to address those issues. And my dad used to tell me, nobody has a monopoly of knowledge. You don't know it all. So I think a lot of our elected officials, do I assume they know it all, or they have all the answers? But as a councilman, I, I do value to listen and create dialogue and conversations, and how we can address those issues as well.
Yeah, one thing that I noticed when reading the Gilbert Plan was that in the next ten years, Gilbert, if the Gilbert Plan does end up passing on August fourth during the primaries, that the plan actually details that the town council will look towards adopting the Climate Action Plan, which is a framework and guidelines that has different aspects of how we can reduce our greenhouse gases and carbon emissions. But you also talk about a little bit of racial inequity when it comes to climate change and how that impacts people. And another thing that I noticed just happening around our country, around the world, in our state, well, when it comes to racial inequity is in housing. And you also mentioned in your website that you want to have Gilbert be expanded to other people. You know, Gilbert's a great place. I've lived here my entire life. And it would be great to see also lovely new faces, once, you know, if to go outside. But so when it comes to housing, especially for young people who have high student loans, would you be in support of more affordable housing coming to Gilbert so that more people who are younger, who are having crazy amounts of student debt, able to live in, you know, our wonderful town?
Yeah, that's a good question, and I think that's one of, that's probably a million dollars question as well. Always like the, from the beginning of American Foundation, the fastest rate we've always built wealth is through homeownership. And I do believe that what we can do as Gilbertians or Gilbertians is that we need to make, we need to encourage the ability of people to be able to move here, to be able to hone home and be able to grow from there. In terms of like, you know, making sure that we have more places for people to live in, I do believe that we need to, we should be able to provide more opportunities where people can, can have jobs and be able to start and be entrepreneurs and be able to grow and be able to leave here and call it home. That Gilbert can be a place for everyone that comes here, and they can also enjoy the safety and security that comes with Gilbert as well. So I do believe that my own way is that we need to encourage more homeownership. But that doesn't mean everybody's gonna buy home at some point, you know? I, you know, we sold our home, you know, just we moved to Gilbert, sold our home to kind of move to an apartment for a little bit, because we, just like you, we had tons of student loans and from college. So we were like, how long are we gonna keep paying this crazy student loans? I didn't want to think about student loans for a very long time, because I was like, you know, it's crazy. I don't even want to think about it. Then I woke up one day and I'm like, it's not going away. It's still there. It's still there. And so we had to like decide what was a trade-off. We wanted to stay in Gilbert, so we sold our home, be able to pay off a lot, a big chunk of our student loans, be able to temporarily move to an apartment and be able to build our equity and save so that we can be able to buy home again. So definitely we have to be able to encourage, there's a time where, you know what, you have to make some sacrifices to be able to, to grow in income, to be able to develop yourself and be able to invest back in the community that you're in. So we're still in Gilbert, and we're able to kind of make sure that our student loan does not hinder us from being able to hone our home, build our life, start a family, which is a crazy thing, because a lot of people graduating college cannot start a family because they have a crazy student loan. A lot of people that graduated college cannot get married or have spouses or can't even pay for, pay for a date, you know? Because, because they have a craziness to the loan days, owing them back. I do think that we need to make, we need to encourage a lot of people to, you know, create a financial literacy first to prepare people for the real world before they graduate, encourage homeownership, and just, and also create a way for people can develop themselves economically so that they can be able to invest back in the town as well.
So with more people coming to Gilbert, hopefully, you know, we do have a high predominant white population here, but the next is Hispanics.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Not to be Latinx representative here. Yeah, both of my parents are Mexican immigrants, and I know you're immigrant as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Another ideal that you want to champion is bridging these cultures and communities together. So what is that gonna look like if you are elected? When you're making decisions on town council, what does bridging cultures and community looks like for you in that decision-making process?
Absolutely. Thanks for asking that. So as someone, of, of course, I wasn't, you know, immigrated here when I was fourteen to New York. So New York is pretty diverse. We have different people, Mexican-Americans, Puerto Ricans, you know, I had a lot of people. When I was growing up, my neighborhood, all I heard every day was merengue and bachata, which is and there's, you know, I had to tell them, you guys, I don't, you know, what's going on? It's so loud. Turn down your music, you know? So I had a lot of Puerto Ricans and Dominican friends, and I have Mexican-American friends. And I do always believe that I have a very unique perspective on life compared to any other councilman, because I have a global influence. I mean, I studied abroad in Argentina. I was born in Nigeria, moved here when I was fourteen. I lived in a multicultural environment. And I mean, tech world, where really there are a lot of you from diverse backgrounds, from Asia, from, you know, India, and you get to interact with different people, and I do. So the aspect of bridging cultures, how do we engage these people within our community? A lot of people stay passive because they're not sure if Gilbert is a place for them. And it takes few, it takes few individuals like you, like me, who is going outside our comfort zone to show these people that, don't be afraid. I do understand that, you know, Gilbert as a whole, we're almost, we're like eighty, eighty, it is, don't quote me on that, but we're pretty much the last, eighty-seven percent Caucasian, that's what it showed, but things would have changed from a few years. But I also believe that one person makes a difference. Once you take a step and engage those communities. I've had like an Indian community in Gilbert reach out to me, because they felt like, wow, we know we have, we found somebody that's, that's, that's unique, and are you gonna listen to her? So the Hispanic population, who can engage those communities, because my friends are pretty diverse. I do think we need someone who doesn't shy away from diversity, that diversity, not in terms of, you know, like, oh, let's be diverse. Gilbert is a great place, but not afraid of people who are different, you know, being able to engage and talk to them and reason with them, and also talk about how can we get you involved. And one area is that it takes one person to make a difference. So the more they see that, the more they realize that, you know what, Gilbert is a great place for all families, is a safe place. And it's really for anyone that loves our town and loves the security and safety and really want to make it a home. I came here because of the safety and security and a great place to raise a family. So I do believe that what I bring is connecting and be able to listen. I'm not gonna shy away from anyone that wants to talk. And I think right now we need, especially with the, with the political climate in our country right now, we need people that would listen. We don't have leaders who listen. We have leaders who have their strong opinions and they dismiss the opinions of others. But part of being a servant leader is really engaging and listening to what people have to say. And that's where I do think I, I bring to the table of really listening and engage. And I'm not afraid of being a place where I'm uncomfortable. I've always been the, you know, kind of, you say the black ship of the family. I've always been the black shipping everywhere. I just, I just stand out, you know? That's been my life. So I'm not afraid of being different, and I think more people should not be afraid as well, because a lot of people are good people, and if you don't engage, you never know.
Yeah, I think another part of, of bridging these cultures and communities also happens to bring it in every day. So if we see it every single day in our lives, you know, it becomes normalized. It doesn't become like a scary thing to talk about. And speaking on to the Gilbert Plan, there's actually aspects of it that promote new public works of art happening in Gilbert and in different places in Gilbert. So it'd be really interesting to see if we could have our Gilbert residents or Gilbert artists from a variety of different backgrounds potentially have their histories and heritage displayed openly and proudly in our Gilbert, because the art reflects who we are.
Absolutely, yeah. Art is a beautiful thing, is a way to communicate, you know, in different ways. And I do think that, I mean, a lot of, you know, I mean, that's, that's a lot of artistic themes within Gilbert. A lot of artists that are trying to just share what they have and just looking for people to, to see what they have and what they have to offer as well. I mean, I have a friend who's an artist as well, and pretty artistic with his heart, and he sold some of his heart here in Gilbert to my family, and I mean, and so we need a lot more exposure of different people to be able to share and speak and communicate. So maybe we use words to communicate, as you know? I mean, like, you know, being the debate that comes natural. Some people communicate with writing, you know, like with books, and sometimes it might not match the speech. And some people communicate with heart, you know? So that's also a beautiful thing, and I think every segment comes together to make what, you know, our state beautiful, our town beautiful, and to make everybody feel appreciated. So I would love to see more of that, and definitely I think heart is a big part of Gilbert and Gilbert history. I mean, look at the Heritage District. I mean, it's a fascinating place. Wouldn't that be beautiful if we have, you know, just places where people can go and, and just see the beautiful diversity and, and hard artistic diversity as well?
And maybe we need some young artists interested in, I can barely color in the lines. It's not a, it's not my forte at all.
I'm good at doodling, you know? So I just doodle. Like, I'm, I'm very good at that, yeah.
If, if you've seen any of my drawings, you would say, no, please do not.
We all start from somewhere, you know, you can draw.
Individuals that hopefully can get involved with Gilbert, maybe through art projects as well.
Do you sing as well?
I, I'm, I'm a huge musical fan. I can sing well in the shower.
You sound like me now.
Like, my shower is my number-one fan.
Oh, gotcha.
Don't know if anyone else would agree, but, but another hot topic other than diversity, that's a really big issue right now in America, has always been, and but even more so now, is COVID- nineteen. We can't really get away from it, because we're all stuck. I'm at home, stuck here, trying to do my part to be safe.
We're all stuck at home, you know?
So the Gilbert Town Council recently voted to mandate wearing masks when you are outside. Is that something that you would have supported if you were on the town council? And is that something you would continue to support if this continues to be a longer pandemic?
That's a very good question. I do think that we have a serious issue with the whole pandemic going on. I do think that we need to encourage people, we need to put the safety and security of people first. My only thing was, I felt this, this is something that should, so in terms of making mandates in from the town council, I felt that should not be amended that's coming from the town. I do think we can encourage people to wear masks. This is something that could have been taken care of on the state level. But I do believe that any way we can encourage people for their safety and their security, you know, it's a very, really big topic right now. It's pretty divisive politically. And I, so I'm not in the council and I'm looking at it from different lens. There are those who say, hey, this is something that for the safety and security of people to wear masks. I do think that we could have mandated people, maybe the issue of making sure that, you know, like the way to walk from home and, and opening the businesses so quickly, that's another conversation. But I do think there's all the ways that we could have gone around it. And the reason why I say that is to what, you know, right now in the council, to what extent as well are we gonna avoid more, most of to make people, you know, saying things and, and start, you know, to, and put on more stuff that will regulate people's behavior on that sense. But that's really open for conversation out there in terms of. I do believe that the security and safety of our residents is very important and is very key. And definitely anything we can do to make sure people are protected. You know, that's, that's something I, I find very important, and I think that's open for conversation, yeah.
Yeah, so additionally with the issue of COVID- nineteen, we're also seeing small businesses affected. So what decisions, because it, it looks like this is going to stay for quite some time. Dr. Anthony Fauci said that he's hopeful for a cure, but it's not like it happened by the end of twenty-twenty. So if, if that doesn't happen, we're, we're going to have prolonged lockdown, prolonged quarantines. And, and especially in Arizona, when we're seeing like a hundred and fifteen percent increase of cases in our state, it, it, it's, it's anxiety-inducing, especially for small business owners who are impacted. So what decisions on the town council do you plan on speaking towards or advocating for to help those small businesses?
Yeah, I do think that a lot of the budget that we have, we can use it to support small businesses in terms of what, how we can help them, you know, a lot of, so a lot of businesses are adapting to be more digitally focused. I work in technology. I'm fortunate to be able to walk from home and be able to do things digitally and connect digitally as well. So I, a lot of, unfortunately, not all businesses can be digital, like you can't eat from the computer. You know, like you can't be in a restaurant. I mean, you can do happy hour, virtual happy hour. But I do think that we need to basically really invest more now businesses can thrive here, especially small businesses, as much support as they need. I, why I'm saying this in a blanket way is that every business is very different. So if you're looking at technology, we are required to be more digital, right? We have to adapt, and some businesses in that area are thriving. But businesses that do not require being able to be digitalized in a way is how can we make them not close down? Like AMC, I'm not sure if you heard, they have to close down a couple of their movie places because nobody's attending right now. You know, there's no dates, you know, going to AMC right now. But I do think the local businesses here, we can, we can invest more, we can cheer them in terms of how we can help. So every business is very different, every business is unique, and find ways we can invest in those businesses, we can encourage them to thrive. I do think that we engage in small businesses a lot more in knowing what specific need that they have and what, what the niche of business is will help us to be able to help individual businesses. And those that, that can be done digitally now for them to thrive. A lot of businesses are thriving right now, like Zoom. Did you know about Zoom like four months ago?
Yeah, actually, I, I have used Zoom prior to this, so it wasn't
Okay, you're younger generation. It's an age thing, you know? Okay, let me, yeah.
Yeah, I've been thriving through Zoom. I've been coaching my kids through Zoom since we've had to go online, but it, it's still, it's still, it's still rough. It's still difficult, but you know, it, it, it works.
Yeah, a lot of new businesses coming out now. Yeah. A lot of new businesses coming up now because of the demand and the change of the market. So life is always changing. The only thing that's constant is change. But the question is, how can we be adaptable? And a lot, unfortunately, you know, some businesses would thrive through that period because they're gaining, they're being, becoming more innovative. And unfortunately, some businesses would, would struggle. But I do believe that our career adapts to where we are. I mean, we can't change the situation we're in right now. We're in the interesting twenty twenty. Uh, yeah, so it's about how can we be adaptable? And I think that's why I said every business has its own niche. And how can we make sure businesses are adaptable and we adapt into the need of that business? And kind of getting caught up with the, just, you know, with the new digital age and the tools and the resources that are available. Just making sure businesses have access to business, to choose that will make them thrive. I think it's very important, you know, and I mean, I've been using Skype. A lot of times I use Teams. But a lot more we're using Zoom because it's more accessible to everybody. But I think that different ways now, we, we can, we can do business and communicate and, and market wherever we have, you know, so, yeah.
Yeah, and, and with this COVID nineteen situation, we are seeing mass unemployment rates. Here in Gilbert, we haven't seen too much of an issue, but it has been going down at seven percent um in May. And we have yet to see what the numbers are in June, but you know, we're almost at the end of the month. So we might have a better picture of it in the next couple of days. Um, and we are seeing businesses shut down. So obviously, there needs to be a response to how we address this uh governmentally when it comes to economic policy. And I know that you are a proponent for fiscal responsibility. So what is that gonna look like in a mid-COVID, post-COVID world if elected to town council?
Yeah, that's a great question. I do think that the fiscal responsibility is making sure that we have a balanced budget. We invest in where it needs to go into. And one aspect is your actual brother, small businesses. Is just making sure that, I do think that the way our community can grow is when you and I can think outside the box and be entrepreneurial, especially at a young age too, and being able to support those ideas and making sure they have all the resources and the tools for them to thrive, you know, in that sense. So as a council, we do have a responsibility to, to kind of think outside the box, especially during, unfortunately, I mean, some businesses are followed, like my wife was, you know, was based on follow as well due to the demand and the economy right now. And, and at the same time during the follow, so we have to think outside the box and say, let's pick up another opportunities from another, another place that we can work online and do things digitally and look for, it's kind of like opportunity cost. There's always a trade off that during this time, how can I make income? How can I, you know, get all the, you know, developing new expertise? Like, one of the things I do, um, I, so I, I basically started New Zealand International, which is a consulting company, which helps individuals develop a skill set that would make them marketable in the market, especially on the digital company. So there's a new skill set that requires understanding how businesses works in the agile framework and helping people realize that new demand in the market, you know, in terms of why a lot of businesses are moving into, especially technology, uh, moving into more of a, um, you know, kind of a different business model, which we call agile framework, and helping people that a lot of demands and opportunities in that field. Have you looked into that? Have you considered those skills? And one of the things I speak to young people on daily basis is that there are a lot of opportunities coming up right now. Uh, basically, you get a lot of calls. I know somebody that get calls every day for jobs because the skill that the person has and the certifications apply to that field. So how do we tell people of those opportunities? This is really opportunity cost. And also businesses as well, in terms of how do we, you know, it's some of those things you don't need to have a PhD or a masters or whatever. It's all about skill. And how can we help people develop the right skill for the right time, for the right period? And that's very, uh, that's very key. Yeah.
As a follow up to that as well, uh, recently, the town council has also uh passed a new budget. And I know that a couple of other candidates who are running for local uh positions have either, you know, been in support of it, have been in against. But a lot of the people who are proponents of fiscal responsibility in Gilbert have been relatively against the new budget for a variety of reasons. So I just wanted to get your opinion because regardless of if
Yeah.
you get elected or not, that's going to be the budget for at least your portion.
Absolutely.
So is this something that you are in support of? And then if so, if not, what changes would you look towards moving forward? Obviously, we can't predict everything, but what's gonna happen in the next year or so? But at least with the uh foresight that we have, what decisions would you make?
Absolutely. So the current budget, I mean, I spent time looking at it and looking where the money is going to. There were a couple of things in the budget that like three years ago, it wasn't in existence. And suddenly, um, it went into five hundred thousand and then suddenly shoot up to one million. With my business background, you know, like there was an issue, you know, that one of the, what was included in the budget was the ambulance, the new positions that were created as well from that budget. So, I mean, looking at that, I mean, we do have like excess, you know, the budget that kind of passed over from last year as well. And regards to allocation of those resources, I do think the parking racks, we do need, I mean, I do respect that. I, I do think we're investing enough on that because the parking racks is necessary for Gilbert. That's part of our town. So the investment in that, I don't think, uh, we can place a limit on that. I think it's a good thing that we invest in on parks and racks and all that stuff. But I think there were just aspects of the budget that I, I wanted more answers. You know, in terms of, it wasn't existing a few years ago and it was created and so much money just went. And as talked about, three years ago, we didn't have ambulance and then there was a change in that. So I do have some questions. I mean, it's not about if I agree or disagree uh with the budget. I do think that there were great investment in that budget for our town. There was a great allocation as well. But there were some areas that were not clear that, um, as you know, we have a town manager and then we have the council, right? So the town manager, so the council votes on the secondary kind of property tax. And then the town manager deals with the day-to-day operations of the budget and we vote on that. And it's more of question, it's more of a question about why did this amount of allocation? Why did they shoot up over the years? So a lot of those questions would be best to be answered for those who are in the current council as they have been able to inquire from the town manager a lot of those questions as well and be able to say, why do we need so much for ambulance, parking racks? I can make sense out of that. Why didn't, why didn't, why didn't we invest that much before? It was a zero investment three years ago. Why did it go from zero to almost half a million and then to millions of dollars explanation? So those areas that are the things you're trying to fully understand. So I don't have, you know, as I said, based on the budget and my time looking at it, those are questions that you walk with in the town manager to be able to clarify and hear more about how does it benefit the town? And that's why I talked about how does it benefit the resident first? That's my question and be able to decide on that. So if I could find answers and responses and how it benefits you and I and people living Gilbert, that's open for conversation. So um, it's a good question. And I do think that there's a lot of polarization on that issue. But it's really a lot of uh things that um the town manager can answer as well. You know, so those are good questions actually, but um, because of my vote, I do think really comes with a lot of questioning, evaluation and determine how, how much impact that has on the residents of Gilbert. If it's, if it's necessity or luxury as well. So those are key things we have to look at.
All right. So that was my last question, but before we all go and we say goodbye and we part our ways for now. Do you have any final things you would like to say before we end this interview?
Yeah, so I do appreciate the time as well. As I said earlier, I love the town of Gilbert. I've been here with my wife and, and daughter uh for a few years. And I do, as a new face in politics, I, you know, running for Gilbert, I've always believed in servant leadership that we put people first ahead of our own personal interest. And one thing that really I represent is kind of listening to our residents, talk with them, talk to them and also talk with them. You know, a lot of times there's a wide gap. Once you become an elected official, you become impossible to talk to or you're out of reach for people. And we do need during this time, especially with due to political polarization in our, in our society today and the climax of politics, we do need a servant leader that actually cares about the people and would listen to, to our residents. And we respect of what people, political affiliation or whatever it is. I do see myself as the candidate that listens to our residents. I'm your friend, I'm your neighbor. I'm like, pretty much can open the window and say, I see your boss, you know, from there. But I, I'm the candidate that will listen to our residents and put Gilbert residents first. And, you know, as people are moving in as well, making sure it's a comfortable and convenient place, not just for some people in Gilbert, but for all people in Gilbert and be able to call Gilbert home. So definitely, those are my final words. And thanks, Danielle. It's been a pleasure as well.
Awesome. Thank you again so much for taking the time to speak with me. So that was Bus Obayomi. He is running for the four-year town council. And if you wanna find out more information about us, I've put all of the links to his website, his social media down below. And if you wanna find out more about me and my efforts to increase civic engagement here in our beautiful town of Gilbert, you can check out those links as well. Don't forget to register to vote. The time is ticking. See you next time.